It's not required, it's going to take a little time. Whatever, I want him to sit there on the phone. Until it's finished. Yeah, and, and, and I don't know whether she needs to or not, you know, these rules, but, you know, it's Dan's response is not appropriate this. Look at these emails. You know, he needs to explain, and he needs to get on it for this time. He better do that. Is that what they called it? Oh, okay. Okay, sounds good. All right. Thanks, see ya. Bye. Just my side of it, or what?
Hello?
Well, uh, so what room are they in?
Hello?
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 How you doing?
Great. How are you?
Just wonderful.
Yeah. Getting everybody, uh, up to date on their technology here.
Yeah.
That's gotta be fun.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you great.
Good, okay. I'm not gonna open YouTube at the same time, I don't think.
So, um, how does, how does this work then?
In terms of? Who is this, by the way?
This is Dan LaFontaine. So...
Oh, okay, so you're in, uh, you're one of the applicants.
Yeah, and I'm like, the last on the agenda tonight. But I probably should at least make sure I'm hooked up.
I'm the Chair, Deborah Jensen.
What's that?
I, I'm the Chair, Deborah Jensen.
Okay.
So I'll be hopefully leading the hearing this evening, along with Development Services.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, I just wanted to log in early so I could make sure I had everything, uh. Basically, the way it's going to proceed is that we'll have, um, we'll read in every, you know, each case as normal.
Yeah.
And, um, staff will present it, we'll ask the applicant to present it. Uh, we'll have the live screen going, so the commissioners that are not physically there are, we're logged into Zoom, so we can see the screen there. And the public is logged into YouTube, so they'll be watching it live. And as the public has questions during the public portion of, of the hearing, instead of them coming to the podium and asking their questions, they will during, during the hearing be typing in their questions, along with their name and, um, you know, their affiliation, whether they're part of the neighborhood or whatever the case may be. And those will be read into the record by staff there physically.
All right, but I've got, I've got a, like, uh, I've got stuff that I'm gonna be saying, so I don't have to type all that in, do I?
No, we'll be able to hear you live. We'll be able to hear everything.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's no problem.
Because if I had to type, then we would be there till, like, I have no idea how long.
No, it's just, you, you're there live and, um, so we're all on the same, uh, uh, what would I call it? Electronic program? And, uh, the public, it, it would be very cumbersome to try to have the public one by one on YouTube, um, you know, talk or ask questions. If we can, if we can have them typed in and read by staff,
Yeah.
then that's much more efficient, especially since this is the first time we've tried this and it's, you know, it's a new experience for all of us, so.
Sure. Nice to be the guinea pig.
Well, at least we could still keep things moving forward and have hearings and, you know, we don't have to put everything on hold.
You don't have to freeze up.
And then, um...
Am I muted right now, or am I not?
You're not muted.
When I mute that, oh, it doesn't mute this, right?
No, we're not on the phone at all. We're not on the phone at all. So you wanna mute?
We've never asked for an authenticated user.
No. Yeah.
Is that Nah?
What's that?
Hi, Nah. Uh, this is Deborah. I guess, I guess my photo doesn't pop up or anything, right?
Your photo pops up, yes.
Oh, good, okay. I'm just seeing you guys in the conference room, so, you and Aaron. Hi, Aaron.
Okay. Michael, were you able to, okay, I, you, you were able to get it in, okay, Michael?
Looks like they're muted, but it looks like they made it in.
Okay, so that's not gonna work. Um... Oh, it's fine.
Michael and Ray, I think you're muted right now.
Okay, so those are our participants, if you wanna know.
Okay.
And you can always come see up here.
Me too. Okay.
And then...
Mute whoever I want, I need it.
Well, that's more than the number on the commission.
So, Nah, can you hear us?
Yeah, we're muted. See that mute sign?
Well, she probably has it on mute. I've got the phone. We're on the phone now. Okay, perfect. We'll mute ourselves now.
Hey, can you hear us?
Yes.
Good.
There was a little bit of feedback at the beginning of that.
Making sure we work. Okay. Yeah. I tried, I got into Google, try that. My Google account. And I'm not sure we have the audio. And I'm, I'm not sure we're allowed to have the audio until it's our turn.
Okay, so I, on my phone, I have, uh, guys who are supporting the Development Services.
Yeah.
And there's probably guys sitting there, and then there's ever, uh, one of the players, Michelle Davis, another.
Yeah, all right, I'm seeing, uh, I'm seeing item three, yeah. And... Let, let me see, hold on a second, I'm gonna mute you for a second, let's see if I can connect with these people.
Deborah, do we have a quorum?
No.
I don't think so yet. I see, uh, Lori Urkiaga just logged in.
That's me.
Oh, hi Lori. I think you and I are it so far.
Hey, Aaron, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you, Rob.
Oh, there's Dave.
Aaron, you can hear me, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got, I've got my partner too that's trying to get on, Nate Porter. He can't, uh, he can't hear. Is there something he needs to be done?
Um, no, it should, it should be working. We've got it all set up so everybody else can hear now.
Okay.
Hey, Rob, are you able to hear me?
I can hear you, yeah, can you hear me?
I can barely hear you.
Um, yeah, if you can hear me, you can hear the whole group. Yeah. That's all that matters. And my screen is showing item three, um, right now, is that, is that where we're starting?
Yeah, we'll be starting with, please, Mike, Rob, so you could probably just mute yours until we get to, uh, your items later on.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Mr. Ardmore?
Yes.
Uh, this is Deborah. I just wanna make sure that, I, I have no way of knowing when we have a quorum logged in here. Um, I'm only seeing your screen right now. When we had our practice run the other day, I could see everyone that was on the call.
Do you see the participants thing I brought up just now?
No.
Okay, uh, it looks like you do have a quorum, so I've gone ahead and started the recording. Um, so anytime you wanna get started, I think we, we could.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so welcome all to our first, um, electronic planning commission hearing. I'll call the hearing to order, it's March twenty-five, twenty-twenty, and it is six oh one PM. Um, I'll start by thanking you all for participating in this sort of experimental new format, but hopefully it works out well tonight for us. Um, first of all, just a brief housekeeping. The starred items on our agenda this evening are legislative and they will require municipal council decision. So the planning commissioners will make recommendations on those items to the council. The items that do not have an asterisk or star are administrative, and the commissioners will be making decisions on those items. Uh, since we don't have physically the public in the room to participate this evening, they will be participating via YouTube. So I would ask members of the public to participate by typing a comment while YouTube is live streaming during the hearing. Identify if you want your comment to be read aloud. We're going to restrict these to only one comment per person. And please include the item number, your name, and city at the beginning of your comment. Each comment will be read for approximately two minutes as time allows, and that will be read by Development Services staff. Please note that if, if you've already emailed your comments, those have been read by the planning commission members, and you don't need to comment again on those items. We have read through all the comments that were sent by email from Development Services to all the commissioners this evening. So I will ask the commissioners to start with roll call. I know Ms. Urkiaga's on the call, so if she would like to start and just state your name for the record and whether you have any conflicts of interest this evening.
Um, my name's Lori Urkiaga, and I am an employee of BYU, so I think I have a conflict of interest there. Um, I was advised at the last meeting that I should probably vote present, um, for that situation.
So you don't feel a need to recuse yourself for this one?
Um, I was I was invited to comment, but not vote.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, next.
Dave Anderson, no conflict?
Thank you, Dave. Go ahead.
Russell Phillips. I, I also have a conflict with this one.
Do you wish to recuse yourself from voting?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other commissioners present?
Oh, I wish I could get this. I can go somewhere else.
If we have no other commissioners present, then we don't have a quorum for item three.
Right. And this is Deborah Jensen. No conflicts. So how would you like to proceed, Mr. Pepperoni?
Yeah, and I can, okay, yay, all right.
Ms. Wynden.
What, what did you do? Did you use the telephone? Just through Google. Signed in through Google. Yeah.
Hi, Maria, we've just got...
Okay, thank you.
So if you could just state your name for the record and whether you have any conflicts this evening.
All right.
Maria, can you hear us?
Maria, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, do you wanna state your name and whether or not you have any conflicts?
Oh, Maria Wynden, I have no conflicts.
Thanks, Maria.
Sure.
So that means we have three commissioners with no conflicts and two with for item three, is that correct, Bill?
Yes, so that means we're still down to a quorum, we need a fourth. Lisa Jensen should be coming into the meeting. Um, we could go to, uh, items four and five and see if Lisa kind of comes in and then we'd have a quorum for item three. But at this point, we can't. We'd do us any good even here, item three, because we just turned up the quorum.
Right. So if that is acceptable to everyone, we can read through item four and five, and perhaps by the time we finish items four and five, uh, we'll have a quorum with Lisa Jensen.
Right, that's our hope.
Okay.
You're sharing.
All right, I will, um, I will read in items four and five then. Four and five are, uh, related. So item four is legislative. Rob Slater requests zone change for residential conservation, R, to low-density residential, LDR, to build three single-family residences on point three located at one sixty-four South four hundred West in the Franklin neighborhood. And Mr. Ardmore will, will, will present item four. And related is item five, which is, um, not legislative, administrative. Rob Slater requests concept plan approval for three single-family homes on point thirty-four acres located at one sixty-four South four hundred West in a proposed low-density residential LDR zone in the Franklin neighborhood. Mr. Ardmore?
Hey, thank you, Deborah. Um, so just to orient everybody with the area. Let me... Okay. Um, so here we are in the Franklin neighborhood. Uh, you've got four hundred west on the right there, and one hundred south on the north, two hundred south, um, below the parcel. You can see there in context of the three units that the developer is, uh, planning with this rezone. There's it zoomed in. Um, you can see unit one would be accessed off of the street, while the other two are accessed off a shared drive. Um, this is the kinda conceptual rendering of what would be built, and these are the floor plans. Um, so if we could go back to the site plan here. Um, the request is for a low-density residential zone, which, uh, this plan would fit into. Staff has analyzed this and finds that the concept doesn't have any big red flags that would keep it from moving forward. We, we would recommend approval on the zone change because of that. Uh, staff feels like this provides additional housing types in the neighborhood, some more possibly affordable housing, uh, without really creating too much of a, a difference or incongruent housing type. You can see from the three renderings that these are home types that are already in the Franklin neighborhood. Um, there's no conflict with the general plan. Um, the neighborhood has offered their support. I don't know if the neighborhood chair is on tonight and might be commenting later in the public hearing. Uh, but staff feels like this was an appropriate zone change and feels like the concept moving forward into a public town down the line, uh, would be a good fit for the neighborhood and, uh, good for the city. Um, the applicant has a slide here, um, for, for his time, so I'll just leave it on that for you, Deborah, if you have any questions, I'll take those.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ardmore?
Aaron, I might have missed this, it's probably obvious. Um, these will be constructed on individual lots, so they can be conveyed separately.
That's correct.
Awesome, great.
Any other questions for Mr. Ardmore?
I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Ardmore or for the developer, but I'm wondering how the height of the new dwellings compares to the height of the existing dwellings or the proposed dwellings.
So they're, they're two-story homes. Um, the developer might have actual numbers on this, but I don't see them going above thirty feet in height.
Yeah, that's right, Aaron, we, we made sure that they, I believe they're twenty-five feet, um, the highest ridge. Um, I, I can confirm that, but we're definitely not over thirty.
Are we getting...
Okay, thank you.
I had two questions.
Yes, hi Lisa.
Sorry about that.
Welcome.
The first one was on lot two, is two parking spaces and for a three-bedroom home? Like, I don't know what, if that meets the criteria.
So I could comment on that, Deborah?
Yes, please.
Um, so each single-family home requires three off-street parking spaces. This, if you look at the site plan, you've got four for unit one. You've got, uh, three for unit two, and you've got four for unit three, so it, it meets the parking requirements.
Okay. I just didn't know if those shared ones counted in the per dwelling count, 'cause they're gonna be subdivided, right? So there'll be three different lots on this subdivision?
Correct, though, um, the applicant can speak to that about what's gonna be private and what's gonna be common.
Okay. And then my last question was, is there any historic nature to the home that protects it from being developed?
It is not on any protected list, no.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
Right, any other questions for Mr. Ardmore?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Did, is there some of this parking that's starting to be...
These questions are for the commissioners?
No, I am a commissioner.
Oh, is that Mr. Phillips?
It is.
I couldn't recognize you. Sorry.
I, I just didn't understand if there was gonna be shared, if some of those parking spots were gonna be shared, or if they're all gonna be on, on individual separate properties.
I think the applicant would be best to address that question.
Yeah, the, um...
And we'll, and we'll invite you to present your project in just a moment, Mr. Slater.
Okay, do you want me to answer now, or wait till...
Uh, we can wait.
Okay.
So any other questions for staff commissioners?
I, I had a question.
Yes.
Questions, actually. Um, the, uh, the first question is, I. Uh, we said, you said that, um, that these were, uh, just renderings, are. Are we pretty sure that this is actually the design that is going to go in or will there be any changes? Any significant changes that would alter the look of these homes? That's my first question, and my second question is. What sort of precedent might this be setting? For future development within Franklin neighborhood and, and perhaps, um. Other neighborhood, similar neighborhoods in Provo for other people maybe wanting to, um, do this on their properties. And so, you know, for staff, I like the look of these homes, I really do, but would that be opening a can of worms or, um. Is this something that, um. That we might just pick and choose a few properties that this would be appropriate for, or is this something that once we do. Allow it on one, we'd kind of be stuck and have to allow it on. Others.
I can, I can try to dress up for you, Maria. With the elevations, first, that first question, um, yeah, sure, they could change, this is a concept plan. Um, there are design regulations in the LDR zone that they'd have to comply with. But they may not look exactly like this when they come back for project plan approval. Uh, however, they would have to meet those design regulations, so we feel confident on those regulations and, and providing a good product. As far as the second question of, of establishing a precedent. Um, I think that in this context where this property was a, a pretty large property, uh, in consideration of what else is in Franklin. Uh, its adjacency to downtown, uh, the dilapidated structure on the property. I feel like this was an appropriate place to do that. Now, the Franklin neighborhood plan does address areas that. Would, uh, be worth pursuing, low-density residential zone. Uh, but I think any others that would be asked for could be taken. Piece by piece, uh, put into context and some might be appropriate, some might not be, uh, on this one, staff thought it was.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yeah.
This is Dave.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. It's awkward, right? Sorry. I was going to mention this later and I'm just going to speak for myself, but I think this is maybe the best project that I've seen in the time I've spent on the planning commission, so I'd love to have some dialogue with staff about. Ways to encourage more of this in Provo. And the Pioneer neighborhoods, maybe elsewhere, but single-family detached homes. Uh, some likelihood that they're going to be owner-occupied. I think this is something we need a lot more of, certainly more of than. The, uh, the type of apartment development that we've seen in these very neighborhoods, you know, it seems like predominantly. That's what we've seen in recent years and I'd much prefer this.
I'll second that comment.
We agree. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Especially with the size and the shape of this property, which allows lot one, the house on lot one to face the street. So it keeps the rhythm of the historic street. Um, we, we really like that, we think that's a major asset.
I was just going to add that I think it's a good use of, of context-sensitive infill in a mature neighborhood. The scale is in keeping with the neighborhood. And it maximizes the use of a large lot to appropriately increase density, you know, you won't feel like. The neighborhood's gotten incredibly denser from the development like this, but it's adding additional housing at a good. A good, uh, price point for the community, so I think it's, I think it's a commendable project. Any other questions or comments for the commissioner, or, I'm sorry for staff?
I had one.
Yes.
Maybe I missed this as I came in late, but. It says in the overview on page two of the staff report of, um, we, are we on item three?
No, we're on items four and five.
Okay, so we're doing them both together or one at a time?
Well, we'll make motions one at a time, but we're discussing them together.
Okay, so the question I had was, it says the restrictions of the RC zone would limit redevelopment to a single-family home. Did I miss an explanation of how that is a restriction?
No, the, the question wasn't asked, um, the RC zone limits the legal permitted use of any property in the RC zone to what was established. Uh, when RC zone was adopted in two thousand and two.
Which would be single-family in this case?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, it's purpose is just to keep it from having this sort of puzzle piece thing overlay.
Um, I couldn't tell you what the purpose is, I wasn't here in two thousand and two.
So maybe another discussion?
I think the purpose was exactly what we're going through right now. The RC zone was intended to freeze everything in place in two thousand and two. And if developers wanted to do anything other than that, they were going to have to go through this legislative process. I think that was the intent of the RC zone.
So this is compatible with that RC zone, then it's not like we're trying to put a little piece in there that doesn't belong? As far as discussion, this process and possibly the project, this is exactly what you anticipated happening with this.
No, I wouldn't say it's compatible with the RC zone, because the RC zone says you only have what you had in two thousand and two. I think, yeah, I think it's compatible with the neighborhood.
Right.
Um, and I think that's one of the reasons why the neighborhood is in support of this.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Any other comments or questions for staff? All right, if not, I will invite Mr. Slater to present his projects. And address any comments, concerns he heard from the commissioners.
Thank you, um. Appreciate everybody's support on this, we, uh. Thought quite a long time about what to do with this property, we watched it, as I, you, as you can see right now on this screen, um. Bought the home next door about two years ago, it was in pretty bad shape. Um, done quite a bit of restoration and remodeling and. And the neighbors have really appreciated it, um, it's dressed up the neighborhood, we, we intended. To come into the neighborhood with the whole purpose of gentrifying, helping gentrify the neighborhood and block and surrounding blocks. Um, so I've been watching this property next door and, uh, gave it a lot of thought and when the ordinance was passed to allow detached. Accessory structures. This just seemed like a perfect fit since that ordinance, or the passing of that ordinance represented what the city wants. And it says infill and, you know, smaller dwellings, so. That's where we really put our heads together and came up with this plan. And, um. We, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad it's well received, I mean, this is exactly what we were hoping. Yeah, one of the questions I, I know was asked about, uh, open space. We, we're trying to, as you can see, uh, from the site plan, we staggered the homes. Uh, such that we, we've tried to maximize that open space. Um, and not just have a linear. You know, strip center looking, looking property, so. The, there'll be no fences, it's a PUD, so. Uh, open areas in between the structures will all be common. You know, people want to come together and do a fence later, that's fine, but, I mean, I guess, I don't know if that's allowed, but. We're, we're building, we're not going to have fences, it's all going to be open, we're, we're trying to really. Maximize, uh, the open space that we do have there. And get that, give that feel of, um. You know, not, not, not too crammed in there. So with, with the help of, um. ALM Engineering, they helped us, uh. Plan this, this, will map out this site plan and. I know they've worked with the city for many, many years, so we took a lot of counsel from them, advice from them and. And then utilizing, um. The ordinances as they are and code as it is, we just felt this was the best fit for, for this property, which is. Like Erin said, it's, it's a large piece, a little, a little over a third of an acre, which is. Pretty big for this, for these block neighborhoods. So, um. And yes, it, it will be owner-occupied, so. No intention of having rentals or temporary occupancies will all be owner-occupied. We want to, we want to, you know, improve the neighborhood and increase the long-term residents.
Rob, can I make a comment?
Sure.
My name is Nate Porter, I'm a partner with Rob.
Thank you.
On this development. One, one thing about these homes is, is they will be great for a family to be able to stay there long-term, they will have unfinished basements. So each of the plans are three-bedroom, two-bathroom with an unfinished basement, so a family can grow there. And with how the downtown, the new community center and all that is happening there in Provo, so close by, it'll be a real desirable place. For families to be able to move to and stay. There for long-term, which I think is, is ideal for any community.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
This is Commissioner Urkiaga, and I'm not sure if this goes to the developer or should go back to staff. But is there any restriction in the zoning or the, um, regulations for that neighborhood that requires owner occupancy?
Uh, I can address that, there's not in the LDR zone and there's not in the neighborhood, anything requiring owner occupancy.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Again, this is, uh, Russell Phillips. I didn't quite understand, or he didn't address the parking issue about them being separate, is that, or. Or is there some of the parking going to be in common?
Okay, can we go back to the site plan, Erin? The intention is to, um. To have the stalls as recognized, um, specific to that property. I don't know, Erin, you, you can address this or answer this question, but in the. Northwest corner of that area, kind of the end of the driveway, could that be? Could that also be par, available for parking?
Um, that would not be parking, talking about the, the concrete in this corner. Uh, that would be required backup space most likely for your, um, unit three.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, we, we would be, uh. We would be limiting those stalls to that, to the specific property that it's, uh. Connected to.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I have a question, um, on the site plan, in front of unit three and unit two, there is a, um. Uh, it looks like a concrete slab, yep, exactly, right there. Uh, is that optional if the homeowner wants that, will you put it in or, or, uh. Are you planning on putting that in? And then selling the home with that there?
Yeah, we do plan to, to put that in as part of the construction and most likely it won't be a concrete slab, but rather a, um. And I, I don't remember the exact term, but it's a. It's almost like a, a weave where there's grass growing in between.
Grass block?
Is that what you call it? Okay.
Pay-for-lock, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's what we intend, we intend to put, um, if it's allowed, then. Again, expanding that, you know, grass area, open area, not, uh, not over. Over-supplying concrete to the, uh, to the project, but yeah, we plan on including that in the, in the construction. Unless, you know, for some reason a buyer comes and says, yeah, I want this property and I don't want it, then. You know, typically concrete and this type of slab work is the last. Stage, in the last stage anyway, of construction, so I would say, I would say under that condition. It's kind of open, but our intention now is to, to include those.
And let me make clear that, that's, that pad and this pad would not be, or this pad is required, this pad would not be required by code for parking.
Any other questions, commissioners?
No.
Nate, do you have any other comments?
No, I, I think it's going to be a fun project if we're allowed to do it. It's. It, uh, the homes that we're building, we really want to keep the look of them, um, time-period homes. We, we really like the craftsman-style homes, the bungalow-style homes that we can do, so. The artist's renderings that we have, that you're seeing now, may not be exactly like that, but be very close in the look. Looking for some ways also to maybe bring in some. Um, architectural salvage, a friend of mine has a salvage company and we would like to look for ways, we can bring in actual. Really old stuff into some of the homes just to. Have it blend in as close as we can to the surrounding homes.
For your information, Nate is doing a lot of remodeling downtown with these old, similar old homes. And has a real knack for, uh. Maintaining that vintage look and timeless look, we feel, so he's, he's a great partner to have in the team.
I actually do have one more question, um. Is there room on this property for trees and, um, shrubs, or are they so close together that. There really isn't any space for those?
Good question, um, there are, there are some existing mature trees, we're trying to, we're going to try and maintain, they're not represented here on the site plan, but. Let's see, yeah, you can see. You can see the foliage there now, particularly the, kind of the one that is a little bit off-center. It'll be pruned and such, but it's, it's a beautiful mature tree, we hope to maintain that.
There's also, there's also on the west side of the property, there's a twenty-foot easement there. It's, it's quite a deep setback and it would be a wonderful place to plant trees. Along there.
Okay, I was wondering what that piece of, of land was, so it's connected to the property, but it belongs to the city?
No, it belongs to Bill Lund. The one to the, to the west, yeah. And just FYI, he has come to me and asked if he could also. You know, use our driveway to access something similar in this property, so he'll be coming to you, I would think relatively soon. With the same, um. You know, request, application and such. And so that, yeah, that's, right now it's kind of landlocked. So that we're, we're kind of, we're pretty much the only access they'll ever have.
But that's not the twenty-foot easement that Nate was talking about, right? The twenty-foot easement is.
No, the easement is ours.
Yeah, that's not, not the property to the west of you.
No, it's not.
Yeah, you can see it now, the site plan.
Okay. So the one you were just talking about is not the same thing as the easement?
Correct.
Right. And there is the, the standard PUD, it goes all the way around the property. And so of that twenty feet, some of that is taken by that, that is Provo's property. To do with. But there's still great room there to plant some nice trees.
Thank you.
And we'll also be going underground with power as well, we've already worked out with Provo City. Right now, everything's overhead, we'll be running it all, um, underground here. Which will, you know, improve, enhance the area as well.
All right, any more questions, Commissioners?
Deborah, by the way, we met, I met you on the little bike tour we did.
Oh, right. That was a great little bike tour. I bought a bike that day.
You did? Good for you. We'll be having more this spring.
All right, if that is the end of Commissioners' questions for the applicant, then I will ask staff whether we have any comments from the neighborhood chair, Franklin Neighborhood?
Rachel, or not? Rachel, or not? Were there any comments?
Um, I don't have one from the chair, but I do have one from a member of the community.
That'll be fine, go ahead and read that in then, please.
Okay, this is from Dennis Snow. He's there, 147 South, 400 West in Provo. He says, "I am writing concerning the petition of Rob Slater on his plans for 164 South, 400 West. I object to three homes being placed there. I really think one nice home with garden and grass place for space. I feel a compromise is good. I would go along with two homes, not three. They need parking space, double garages, and off-street parking." Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Any other public comments that have been entered into the record or entered into YouTube for items four and five?
I do not have any on YouTube at this time.
Great, thank you. All right, I will, I will ask the applicant again, Mr. Slater, if you have any, any additional facts or information you'd like to add, and if not, I'll turn it back over to the Commissioners?
One last, one last comment, yeah, we did have a neighborhood meeting invited the whole neighborhood, and we presented at that time, and we had no, no pushback, no comments in a negative way, it was all positive. So we have, we have done through the neighborhood, and I'm aware Dennis is, Dennis knows, he's across the street. I'm aware of his, his, his point, but I told him I would send him a site plan and drawings, and so I would do that, and try and, you know, appeal to his, his concern.
I think that, I think that the neighbors will be very pleased with the final product when it's done, because we're building it in such a way that we want to maintain as much of green area as we can, to maintain the views, and just with the home number one facing the street, it would really be an eye catcher, and then, so I feel it'd be a nice improvement. It's something that I would like to have happen in my neighborhood if I happen to live in the Franklin Neighborhood.
Ms. Jensen, we have a comment that just came in on YouTube.
Great, thank you.
Okay, this is from Dave Horn in Provo, 65 East, 3900 North. He says, "I applaud the developer, but I would agree with another that it would be better with two homes."
Great, thank you. Right, if those are the only two comments we've received this evening, I'll go ahead and close this portion of items four and five discussion to public comment, and turn it back over to the Commissioners for discussion, motions, and please remember that these are two separate items, so we will need to propose two separate motions.
I'd like to make a comment.
Ms. Wynden?
There is a, kind of a similar development here in the Mazer neighborhood on the corner of 300 South and 600 East, was a Habitat for Humanity project, and, uh, there were some who kind of objected at first, thinking that the homes were going to be squished and too close together, and that nobody would want to live there, and, and yet, once it was completed, and I don't think the homes there are, are as attractive as, as the ones that are being proposed to be built here, but they were filled right away, and the people that live there have continued to live there. And so I think that there is a, a market for homes like this, you know, there are people that want to have a single-family home, but don't want the huge enormous yard, and so I think that, you know, just as there's a market for apartments and condos, there's an apart, there's a market for single-family homes with huge yards, I think there's a market for this as well. And, and so I, I'm impressed with the, the renderings. I hope that, that they do turn out to look like, you know, what we're seeing in the, in the pictures, because I think they're quite attractive, and, and I think that they've made accommodation for, to handle off-street parking, so I'm not seeing concerns, I'm not seeing concerns that would keep me from voting favorably for this project.
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioners?
I'm ready to make a motion, Madam Chair.
I have one thing.
I'll wait.
I have something.
Yes, Ms. Jensen?
So just to understand the process, if this concept plan is given approval, does he still have to get approval for a subdivision at some point before he can start? Is anybody?
He'll still have to go through a subdivision process and a project plan.
Okay, is there anything in that process that would be unlikely to be okay?
Not that we can foresee. The project plan will come back before you, along with the actual renderings of the actual buildings.
Okay, so this isn't final, this is just saying we like the idea and we approve the final one later. Okay. I feel like it's compatible with a single-family neighborhood. I know they're smaller lot sizes, but I don't feel like we're turning it into a, an apartment strip. I feel like this is a really nice project.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Anderson, did you want to make your motion?
Talking about item four, the zone change, is that right?
Yes, item four.
Thank you. I move that we recommend that the city council approve item number four.
And would you read the item in for us, please?
Easier said than done, but yeah, I'll figure that out somehow.
I could read it in for you.
I could read it by proxy as well.
If you have it in front of you.
Item four, then, Mr. Anderson proposes that we forward a positive recommendation on item four. Rob Slater requests a zone change from residential conservation, RC, to low-density residential, LDR, to build three single-family residences on .34 acres located at 164 South, 400 West in the Franklin Neighborhood. All those in favor of?
I second.
I'm sorry, seconded by Ms. Urkiaga. All those in favor of sending a positive recommendation to council for item four?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Maybe you need to ask for Nate.
Shall I go through a roll call for that, then? Might be easier. Okay, we'll start with you, Ms. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous, so we will forward a positive recommendation on item four to municipal council. And do we have a motion for item five? That's for concept plan approval.
I'll make a motion.
This one?
That the planning commission approve item number five. Rob Slater requests concept plan approval for three single-family homes on .34 acres located at 164 South, 400 West, in a proposed low-density residential LDR zone in the Franklin Neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Wynden. Do we have a second for Ms. Wynden's motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Jensen. All those in favor of, well, let's just, let's just vote for item five, approval of item five, and I'll go through the roll call again. So Ms. Jensen is seconded. You're an aye. Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Motion? Aye. Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Jensen, aye. So that is unanimous. Item five is approved as read into the record. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody, and it just tells me that we're all in sync with this concept, which now tells us we need to go find some more property.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
I believe we're ready to go back to item three. And just as a reminder, I'll read the rules of engagement for the evening on item three, or actually all the items. That members of the public are invited to participate by typing a comment during the YouTube livestream of this hearing. Please identify if you want your comment to be read aloud, only one comment per person, and include the item number, your name and city at the beginning of your comment. Each comment will be read for approximately two minutes as time allows. Please note that if you've already emailed your comments, those have been read by the planning commission members, and you do not need to comment again at this time. So having said that, I will turn to item three and read item three into the record. Item three, Michael Davis requests project plan approval for a four-story school of music building, 171,000 square feet, located at approximately 800 East, 1060 North, in the public facilities PF Zone. This is in the university neighborhood, and Mr. Ardmore will present item three.
Thank you. So again, we'll orient you first. So here we are, 9th East and Campus Lane, just south of the primary, in the parking lot of the law building. What's being proposed is a new music hall for music classes and occasional performances. Let's see the site plan there, would take about half of the parking lot. And here it is, zoomed in. So the renderings, you can see, it's an attractive building, it's a nice building. Steph has no issue with anything with the building as proposed. There are a few remaining issues with Steph through our coordinator review committee process. You'll see that as a recommended condition, that these issues be worked out before any approvals are given with permits. The main thing with this one is parking. So Steph has reviewed this, it looks like they would be losing around 300 spaces from the law parking lots, and not adding additional spaces for the music building. So that is the main issue that Steph is concerned about right now. A building like this would require a certain amount of parking spaces by code, which hasn't been brought forward by the applicant, nor have we received all the information that we would need for a parking reduction request with a transportation demand management program and the engineer's traffic study on those things. So we're, we're kind of in flux on those issues. As you can see, the staff report recommends approval of the project with the condition that planning commission feels comfortable with the parking setup as presented by the applicant, and this slide I'll let them present, this is information I got from them today that you can see in front of you, and that the other condition would be that the CRC, the coordinator review committee, concerns get reviewed, and that the plans get approved by the CRC before a building permit would be obtained. So that's kind of where we're at with this one. I'll, I'll try to take any questions, but I think a lot of it will be to the applicant on the, the parking issues.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ardmore on item three?
I have a question.
Please.
Can you tell us if there's any requirement for proximity to parking? Just because there's an empty lot by the Marriott Center, the football stadium, is that permissible, is parking something that's all the way across campus?
I think it could work if there was some sort of planned shuttle from that lot to the music building for those purposes, but again, the applicant would have to speak to that.
Okay. I just worry if that's a solution, that there's a lot of developments throughout town that could say, well, they could park for free in this public lot, and?
With this, this campus all being one parcel, there's no requirement that the parking be located adjacent to the door of the building, because it is all one parcel, they can, they can be flexible with that.
Okay. So some of the letters we received from the neighbors talked about it being an incomplete application because it didn't have those parking things. So do we disregard that concern because it is actually complete, or how do we, how do we read that information?
So the parking data that we received today, so the applicant would like to go through that, but I'm not sure that the information we received today meets the requirements of the ordinance for a parking reduction. If that is the case, then this probably needs to be continued so that we can get the information that's needed, that's elaborated in the code.
Okay, that was my concern as well, that we'll wait and see what they say. Thank you.
I guess I have one question. Is, is the campus currently, from the standpoint of students, visitors, and administration and faculty, that currently adequately parked by code?
We don't have enough information at this time to answer that question.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Anderson?
In light simply of what we've just heard, I'd be inclined to make a motion to continue this if you'd entertain that.
Prior to hearing the applicant?
Yes, if staff doesn't have adequate information to complete a review, then I think it'd be premature for us even to hear from the applicant.
Understood. Commissioners, would you like to weigh in on that proposal?
I had the same thought, if it's not complete, but I would be willing to listen to them in case their information gives us something to believe otherwise, but if staff has already stated they don't think it's complete, I'm torn.
And there's also not a transportation study completed and submitted yet, is that correct?
That's correct, my knowledge.
So even if they tell us good information, if those two things are missing, then this is an incomplete request?
I had the same thought, but I didn't know if we needed to, needed to listen to the applicant before making a decision to continue it, but yeah, I had some, I had a lot of concerns about the parking issue.
Well, I would agree about the parking. If, if we don't know if the campus is adequately parked for its occupancy or use as it sits today, then how can we make a decision on? then how can we make a decision on eliminating 300 parking spaces and adding active uses in new buildings that invite both the public in and the student body and administration in? How do we make that judgment call as commissioners? You know, how do we evaluate whether the parking proposed is going to be adequate if we don't know if they're adequately parked now?
But would continuing it two weeks be adequate time for a traffic study to be conducted and for some of the answers to the questions that have been raised by letters received by some of the neighborhood to be answered?
I think there's a fair chance that it might not be enough time, but I think that's out of our control.
So your next meeting is on April 1st, that's just two weeks away. There is one item on that agenda that's going to
April 1st is one week
I'm sorry, one week away. Yeah, it got moved up because of the spring break. Your next planning commission meeting is a week earlier than it normally would be. There's a very complex item on that agenda, and it may not be an ideal agenda to put other things on, so this may be better to move to the second meeting in April, which would be the 22nd.
Would that allow enough time for a traffic study to be conducted?
Sure.
I would think in that time that staff and the applicant can answer the questions.
Alright. Any other discussion, or would someone like to make a motion on this?
I move that we continue item three.
Okay, Mr. Anderson has moved that we continue item three. Michael Davis requests project plan approval for a four-story school of music building, located at approximately 800 East, 1060 North, in the public facilities PF Zone, university neighborhood. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion?
I think I'd like to second it because I really like the idea of applicants understanding that things need to be completed, and that everyone is held to the same standard of review.
Was that a second, Ms. Jensen?
Yes, with an opinion tacked on to the end.
Thank you. So noted. Seconded by Ms. Jensen. All those in favor of approving item three to be continued until the second meeting in April, if the applicant can complete all the requirements to resubmit. And I'll start again with a roll call. Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Abstaining.
Right. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips is recused?
Yes.
And Ms. Jensen, myself, aye. So item three will be continued until the second hearing in April. Alright, and the next two items I will read in together. Items six and seven are related. Item six is legislative. Daniel LaFontaine requests a zone change from R110 to low-density residential for 1.07 acres for a townhome development located at 50 East, 3900 North, in the River Bottoms neighborhood. And item seven, which is administrative. Daniel LaFontaine requests concept plan approval for 12 townhomes in a proposed low-density residential LDR zone located at 50 East, 3900 North, in the River Bottoms neighborhood. And Mr. Ardmore will present both items six and seven.
Thank you. So let me go ahead and, you might recognize this from November, but this is the area that we're looking at, 3900 North, and between University Avenue and 70 East or 100 East. First, let me note that you should have received, I believe about 48 emails that were forwarded to you over the last week from neighbors. Two of those were for the proposal. Forty-six of those were against the proposal. Some of the major reasons that those 46 people were against the proposal, from what I gathered in their emails, was they noted it's against the general plan. It's different from what's existing in the neighborhood. There's other townhomes nearby already. There's not enough space on the parcel for what's being proposed, that the applicant would not listen or compromise at the neighborhood meetings, that traffic and parking issues would be spilling out into the neighborhood, that there's not enough green space, and that not enough space for dumpsters. Those are the main issues that came up in those 46 emails against. But let me get to the staff's review of this. So here's the site plan and how it would fit in the neighborhood. Here's a zoom in on that. Now, this is an updated site plan that shows a little bit more detail with trees and sidewalks, which helped a little. But in this case, a zone change is being requested. And Steph has reviewed that zone change against the general plan, but also reviewed the concept plan against the proposed zone. In doing that, we found a number of discrepancies between what's being proposed. Here's some line elevations, but I think what gets a better picture is some of these renderings. So what's being proposed from staff's review has failed to meet a number, six specifically, design regulations of the LDR zone in regards to frontage to the street, pedestrian connections, open space, and so on. Those are detailed in the staff report, so I won't go into those in detail, but because of those deficiencies with this concept, as you can see more here, staff is recommending a denial, and recommending that the planning commission recommended denial to the city council on this request. We're not against having a low-density residential zone in this area. I think if the right proposal came forward, that would satisfy these conditions and satisfy some of these concerns. Staff would like to look at that, but the current proposal, staff could not get behind. So we would be making those recommendations to the planning commission tonight. If you have any questions on what's in my staff report on those two items, or anything I've said now, I'll try to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Ardmore?
It seems like there's a lot writing on those six items. I'd love to spend some time going through those one by one.
Okay. Would that be appropriate to do now, Ms.?
Please, yes.
The first is, the first may have been satisfied with this updated site plan. It is that there shall be a logical hard surface pedestrian connection between the street and the front entry. I see that this updated site plan that we got, was it yesterday or today, has addressed this with these pedestrian walks through the, the drive and up to the units here. So that we might be able to cross that one off. Number, the second one was, and these are all from section 1434 to 87. The second was, building shall not front an interior property boundary or parking lot. You can see that units seven through 12 do not satisfy that. Number three is any, in any development of six more townhomes, each townhome shall front a street and open space or pedestrian way. So I guess that, again, units seven through 12, that's somewhat in question if it's satisfying that. And before is, the majority of new buildings and multifamily developments shall be sited along the block face rather than the interior of the block. I think this is very evident of what it would look like from the street, here and here, and two and five, that that doesn't really meet what's trying to happen with the design regulations of the LDR zone. Number five, residential units with individual entries shall include windows on the ground floor that look out onto the street with wall openings comprising at least 30% of the street facade, measured as a percentage of the side area between the ground plane and the finished floor elevation on the second floor. That's just not, so the sidewalk's down here. So there's, there's really no view from the street to the apartments. It's, it's almost a grade above. And then the last is the porch floor height, so this comes to the porch floor height shall not exceed 30 inches above the elevation of the top of the street curve. And this is all about that, as you can see.
Those are on page three of item seven, if you guys would like to look at them, two and three.
Yeah, page two and three, thank you.
So there's been no attempt to lower the parking, the garages, the low grade in order to meet the requirements of the LDR zone?
No, there's, there's been no, no offer of that.
Okay. Thank you for going through those six points, that was very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Ardmore at this time?
Yeah, I wanted to know what the density was for that development that was just approved to the south. How many units per acre is that one?
I don't have that, but I can get that to you. I don't have it right now.
Let me see if I can find it. Go on with the discussion, I'll see if I can find it.
Thank you.
Okay. The reason I ask is because my, my major, all these other issues aside, my major thought is that it's acceptable to, to change zoning when you're creating a buffer zone, perhaps. So we're trying to buffer this neighborhood from University Avenue, but we're not doing it by, by putting the highest density possible there. We're doing it that something that's in between the densities that are already there to be that middle ground. So I like the idea of a development there, but I feel like 15 units on that spot, maybe six to eight would be a persuadable buffer, if we're talking about a buffer being a middle of the road. That's why I asked the question about density.
The previous development, it was about a third of an acre, and there were three lots, so that would translate to nine, which seems to me more reasonable than 12.
What about the ones that are immediately south of this one that are like townhomes or something? Is that what you're talking about, Laurie?
No, I'm talking about the, the issue that was number three and four, I guess.
Four and five.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the ones that are just to the south here, like at 3850 North on the map.
Old Ivy Development.
Yeah. Maybe we can count and figure out an approximate.
I have one question for Mr. Ardmore. On the south entrances for those townhomes, seven through 12, are those townhomes facing the back of the townhomes that are at Old Ivy? Is that an alley? Is it just?
They're facing a wall.
They're facing a wall?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Nice.
Maybe one other question for me. Exactly how large is this property? I'm sure it's in the staff report, but I'm just not seeing it.
Half an acre?
1.07 acres, it says.
1.07.
Yes.
I guess maybe one other question for staff.
Yes.
We discussed this a little while ago, that was mentioned, and I think one of the reasons that the commission didn't act on it at that point in time was that we just simply felt the design that was proposed then didn't seem to fit, was really out of context, given what's been either built or what's under construction in the area. Has there been considerable dialogue with the applicant to try to get a design put forth that is acceptable from staff's perspective, or, I mean, it's, it seems odd that that would be a sticking point at, at this point.
From, from my perspective, the, the design did change. It, it got less modern, and it, it did change. But from the member chair, he might speak to this tonight, there wasn't a whole lot of dialogue or compromise between the two parties, which was one of the goals of continuing it, is allowing those concerns to be hashed out. From what I understand, that, that did not happen.
I guess I'm mostly concerned about staff's role and their recommendation and any efforts that they've made to work with the applicant to get a project ready for approval. Has there been dialogue with staff?
Through the CRC review, there has been, so applicant was aware of the code and what needs to be addressed, and it just has not been.
Okay. Were you finished, Mr. Anderson?
I think so, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I just have one question for staff. Does this property fall into the University Avenue overlay design zone?
It does not, because you can, it's close, but there's a sliver of a parcel from the pet hospital that separates it from falling into that corridor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from our four staff at this time, commissioners?
I, I have one. Can ingress and egress to the property only happen from 3900? Or can 70 East be used?
Is chosen to not use 70 East. So right now, he's just showing that one access.
Is that the choice of the property owner, or? Okay.
Any other questions?
Not at this time.
No.
Okay, great. I will invite the applicant, then, Mr. LaFontaine, to present his project to the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good. Technology's working today. So just, I'm gonna work my way backwards a little bit. I, I really, I'm a little bit surprised on several things. One being, there was really, I know the staff, I'm not sure how much I'm supposed to work with the staff there. I didn't really have any dialogue whatsoever with respect to the the number of, of units that were there from our last meeting and the continuance. The number of them that are there, which are 12, really, the only two issues that came up were that, you know, there was an increase in traffic. And also, there were a few other comments made, but so I just was not aware of that, I, I guess, maybe I should have been, or but that's, that's what I took away from that last meeting. As far as the six design regulations not met, it looks like instead of six, there were maybe four that were not met, and two of them, two of the four, numbers five and six, on the design for the window at the street level, not sure I understand that one, but that's something that could be pretty easily fixed, as well as the port Um, but that's something that could be pretty easily fixed, um, as well as the porch height. And uh because these are, you know, concept designs, they're not the final engineered plan, so. Um, those things can change. So, you know, that kind of sounded like a lot, six design regulations that weren't met, but it um. Looks more like two that were, that are, have any significance that can't. The, well, they could all be worked on. Anyway, so. That being said, um, I've been, I, I'm not sure how many of the commissioners there, I can't remember exactly everybody that was there last time. But I've been asked not to repeat. Everything that I said in the first meeting and address what was requested by the committee for the purpose of a continuance of the previous meeting, so. I'll speak to that specifically. Um, there were three requests made of me from the last meeting. One was to work out the issues with the neighborhood, two was to. Provide a complete concept plans and three. Was to uh respect the design of the neighborhood and the corridor. So I'll just address each one of those and. Probably have to answer questions, however you guys would like them answered, but uh first off, um. Working out the issues with the neighborhood, so we did have another neighborhood meeting. It was held and there seemed to be no desire really to work anything out, nor was there, there any room for compromise. Um, I was mostly asked questions that were mostly statements with rhetorical questions at the end. And it became obvious. In the meeting that it was not to accomplish what the committee had asked us to do, but rather is a bunch of um rehearsed emotional venting. And um in reviewing their notes. There, you know, that, that I received from um later on from the chair was um. Well, there was a, the lack of factual basis led to personal jabs and. Uh, fear mom, fear mongering instead of trying to work anything out, so. I feel like I'm a pretty reasonable guy, but you can't really. You can seldom answer. An emotionally charged question or comment to the satisfaction of the enquirer. Although I did try, so. Therefore, the meeting was highly energized, but unproductive. Um. Fact uh that this neighbor is not realizing is this, the property is uniquely prejudiced. And it's become that way for two reasons, one is for the city. Uh, in their efforts to expand, to fulfill their goals. And what their action plans are, and two, it's also a product of what the neighbors have ratified should be done along this corridor, so. Um, that's, that was. Topic one. Number two is um complete. Concept plans, um. I'm not sure, well, we kind of went through those, but um, you know, I, there, I believe there may have. Those were reworked, there's site plans, floor plans, elevations, renderings. Although looking at Rob Slater's renderings might not look as good. Uh, drainage plan and sewer plans, so. All the uh other elements remain the same, with the exception that there's a higher roof line to accommodate for the news, new design, because the previous one. Which I'm not sure if any of you even saw was more of a contemporary design that was flat. So. Uh, these are not, you know, it's a concept plan, they're not engineered, and um. And I think that's for a reason, I, my understanding is that with the city, when you want to um accomplish. Something like this, you uh. Instead of having to spend, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to keep redoing plans, then um. You know, you're able to do, give you guys what you need to look at it, but also not, not to go so far overboard to have to have these. We're drafted up that way. So. Um. Two comments from the, the uh CRC report, one was that it um needed to meet the requirements of the North University. Uh, river bottom design corridor. Um, upon a, upon a full project plan application of the zone changes approved, and I feel like I've done that. And also from Public Works, they um. Their comments were that they had no comments on the concept plan. Um, that would prevent the rezone request, some de- some details and revisions will be needed on the street design, the utilities, the drainage, the calculations. But those can all be addressed at the project plan review. Uh, and furthermore, in conversation with them, I was told that they feel they can resolve any issues moving forward. And any details that can be worked out. So. Um, that being said, hopefully what I've provided there to you guys is uh sufficient for your, for the committee. Um, it, I, there is one engineer in looking at it, and I know everyone's got, of course, their opinions, but. Um, his. His requ- his um response was, he says it's the best use of this property, it's between the busiest street in Provo. And a single home residences, or a single family residences, and it acts as a buffer between the two, and so. There are many other possible considerations for this property, or configurations that could be put together for this property. Um, the request for the approval for a low-density residential uh zone change would feel. Would fulfill the best use of this property. And um, I know the neighborhood, they keep referring to this as a high-density development. Rather than a low-density development. But um it follows the uh logical border that runs along the east end of this property, it's, it's a natural, consistent continuation. Of what already exists along the, the corridor, and it is um the best use of this property. Um. Uh, the last thing, three, is uh respect and the design of the neighborhood and the corridor, so. Um, I, you know, I went to great lengths to come up with a project that is mutually agreeable, I tried to do this by taking uh the best-looking. Newest homes to the south of me, and by our chapel, the new homes going in there. And these homes, you know, they're the talk of the neighborhood on how beautiful they are. And I took the exact same elements, applied them to my redesign. And the responses were, uh, you know, a bit hypocritical in that this is, well, it's gross, it's ugly. I, there's no way I want that in my neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, so. Although it was my desire to work with the neighborhood, their reality is that doing so. Um. You would have to bend completely one hundred percent to their liking, or basically hit the road. And that's unfortunate, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to work through some things, there's no question about that. Um, but. Working through it is, you know, that's going to be the issue. Uh, I think the design is altered to fit the neighborhood and the corridor, it's lockstep with the Provo City Master Plan and. Um. It. It was brought up previously from some neighbors that. Part of their um angst towards this is that there was some type of uh. An agreement between Perry Homes and. And uh Provo City. I'm not sure what they're meaning by that, my understanding is that anything that was agreed upon is actually being built right now, or, or will be built, it's already been um approved. Uh, if there's anything more than that, then I was kept in the dark about that. Uh, was not made aware of it, haven't seen any agreements or documents, um.
Um, and I have to admit as well that I think. Even as much as this falls short, this, in my view, does measure up pretty well. With other things that staff has recommended that we approve in recent years, so. Um, it does seem as though there's some history to this. That um has created kind of an uphill slope for the applicant to deal with. Um. Having read the feedback that we've received from the neighborhood. I, I absolutely would have to say that um there seems to be some. Considerable unwillingness to try to find middle ground on the part of the, the majority of the folks that have weighed in on this. Um. But that being said, uh, along the lines of questions for the applicant, uh, the side elevations, for example, um, if I were a resident that lived. Across the street to the east from these. And had to think about looking at that blank wall elevation, I've got to admit, I would be flipping out as well. Um, that is part of why I say the design, I think, is way off. And far from being ready to approve. Um. Uh, and things like the roof line there, you could do a lot of things to, to uh just make that more attractive and less impactful. Um, that's probably my biggest concern relative to the design, though. Um, I'd love for us as the city to review. Um. The uh provision that's listed as number five in the staff report, um, I love the idea of a walk-up. I love the idea of having some yard space in front, porches and different things like that. Um, I think that allows for more opportunities with, you know, interaction at the street level and things like that than, than having windows would, um. So I really am struggling to uh agree with. Staff's particular points that they've raised, but certainly agree generally speaking that the design doesn't cut it at this point, that being said. What's your appetite, appetite as the applicant to work on that and, and come back with something different?
Well, I have a strong appetite for that, that's something that um, that was uh, you know, it wasn't even brought up to my, to my recollection, so. Um, I know the first pictures that the neighborhood got, there were not even any windows on there, and that was my mistake because of the way it was sent out. Uh, from the guy that did the rendering, so. You know, maybe, maybe we could put in um. You know, something over those windows, uh. Um. Kind of like an awning type thing that would make them look better, I don't know what it. I, 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 uh, what, what kind of um? What, what kind of suggestion would you have on that, I?
Uh, the only suggestion.
Come up with.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take some liberty and interject really quick, Madam Chair, that you need, if you don't already. Have a qualified design professional to help you make those decisions.
Okay.
And to come up with ideas on how to make elevations more interesting, and to make this appealing enough that. Um, you can win over more support than you have already. Uh, you, I, I don't see this faring well for you if you don't do that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll add my uh comments as well, uh, one of the LDR zone requirements. Is that the ground floor not be a dead zone, so that's why there's a requirement for transparency at ground level. Uh, what we're trying to avoid. Being built in Provo.
Yeah.
Our uh exterior walls at the pedestrian level. That have no visual interest, that have no clue what's behind the wall, that are kind of dead and threatening, actually. If you're a pedestrian, there's, there's no eyes on the street. So imagine walking by either on. Where the entrances are or on the side street, that's just a dead zone. So that's one of the reasons that regulation is part of the LDR zone requirement.
Okay, I will pay.
And I understand those are garages, but that needs to be addressed, it's in the zone, it's, it's in the requirements for a reason. It's not arbitrary or capricious.
Okay.
Um, I would also. Having reviewed many projects that the city has reviewed previously or city staff, I would strongly recommend that you, as a developer. With your designer, work closely with community development staff, because they will. They will help avoid you going down the rabbit hole of throwing a lot of money at design fees. When you're off on the wrong track, so I would strongly encourage you. To avail yourself of their expertise and work closely with them.
And who would that be exactly?
Mr. Ardmore, Mr. Pepperoni, whoever's assigned to review your project.
Okay. And none of those happened, I, and perhaps that's because, that, I'll, I'll take full blame and responsibility for that, but. I.
I'll just say you'll be much more success, successful going through the process.
Sure.
Moving forward, if you take, avail yourself of their expertise and their knowledge, because you're coming to these kind of blind, and if you have that information upfront. You can save yourself a lot of time, money and anguish.
Well, that's for certain, and that could have all been saved uh months ago. Um, but it, 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 it felt to me like it was more of a, it was like me against that staff and against the neighborhood, so. Um, it's been an upward battle, obviously, but, and I expected that. And I got thick skin, I can take it, but um I would sure like to do this thing a, a lot cheaper and quicker with uh some, some good input, instead of just a, a bunch of um. Barrage of negative, um, well, I don't even want to go there. So, yeah, that's, that's a point well taken, I will have to uh travel down that road for sure.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. LaFontaine, commissioners?
I have questions.
Please.
Mine are mostly about the density, because I, once again, am really. Stuck on making it a buffer and not its own little zone. But I think that some of the other issues could be addressed by reducing your density more of a buffer density. Space that it appears you have on your uh renderings. It doesn't even look like there's enough room for somebody to pull into those garages. Um, other neighborhood concerns, we're about landscaping and open space, and if you. Were able to turn this more into a buffer density, instead of the highest level of density, you could provide for those and make it more of a community fee, instead of a. Instead of a cram as many in as you can, and they have a hard time getting it out, and. I, I, I've seen a lot of projects where there's two-car garage, and that should be enough for their residents, but if the quality of the development isn't high enough, they'll end up being filled with multiple single residents. Who have multiple cars, and then you've got angry neighbors, cars out on the street. And I can see that being a problem if, if you aren't, that that's a potential problem. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that is helpful, thank you, I um. Um, the engineer that, that put this together, um, he's an older gentleman and has been doing this for decades here, and is real familiar with. All the codes and everything, and um his, his comment to me on, uh, we'll, we'll take the garages in particular. You know, the city uh has come up with certain um. Uh, codes for. Uh, space, you know, as far as how far away the um next building are out of a garage and so forth, so. He was very careful to make sure that he went by what it is that is acceptable by the city, and that's what he, he, he drafted up, but um. So I think, uh, you know, as far as the city and the parking, um. I, I, hopefully that's been addressed, we've provided two and a quarter, which is what is required by the city uh for the parking. Um. But we will, we'll take a little more look at that, and then also, this doesn't, um, these renderings don't show it too well. Although the initial one, the first one that I had, I, maybe I need to rehire that person, but um, it looked very nice. I mean, there's, there's, there's grass, there's shrubs, there's trees. It's very. Very uh um appealing, you know, all the way around. Uh, this does not look quite so much. The one number three there looks a bit, a little bit better. That's more of a. That's more what the concept uh would, would look like for. For, for what these would, would turn out with, and it still doesn't even have all the big, the trees and the shrub in there. So, yes, thank you. I'll um, certainly that's, you know. At this point, I'm open to suggestions.
Because you've got access issues as well. If, if you have got a garbage truck trying to get in there to collect trash, are they all gonna have to drag it out to the one street that faces it? Are they gonna be able to turn around? Where do visitors park when they come? There's a lot of things that will. That will overflow into the neighborhood, which is probably heightening their sensitivity to what they're seeing because. It's not, it's gonna fall into their yards and their street and their existence more than we anticipate it would. More than you would guess it would anyway.
Okay.
Boy, I appreciate the questions that have come up relative to density. Um, this project's at 11 units to the acre. So for staff, what, what is permitted in the LDR zone? And what is the density of the project of the south? And maybe while you're digging an answer up for those. Um, I also really agree with the idea that density probably should transition from. The south to the north, so this should be less density than the project next door. Um. What, what is that number to the south and what does the LDR zone potentially permit?
So the LDR zone permits 15 units per acre. This one's obviously about 12. Uh, the one to the south. Uh, came out at about 4.8 units to the acre.
The townhome project of the south is 4.8 units to the acre?
Yeah, they had a larger parcel. That's the information that we were given.
No, I'm sorry. That's, that's not even, that's not even in the ballpark.
Well, from my driveway, there's, it doesn't seem right to me either.
Yeah. Now, I'm talking about for the residential part of the development.
We, we texted.
3850 north.
Excuse me, we texted.
Right. Units over space that I, you know, I'll bet lunch. That that's more than the 11 units to the acre that we're talking about here by a noticeable amount.
Okay, hold on.
According to the project planner, it's 18 units on 3.7 acres.
With commercial uses included and different things like that?
No.
Separate parcel.
Boy, just even looking at the image that we're seeing here, that's really hard for me to, to believe.
Are each of those little blue squares, isn't that each of those a property?
It is.
The unit, yeah.
25 of them there.
We can go back and recalculate it, but the information I gave you was from the project plan.
Well, maybe that's just something that we can have Mr. LaFontaine take into account as that that would be our objective is to have something that was more of a buffer. And I'm sure the neighbors would be. Uh, happy that he was addressing that. And if we could. Find out what those numbers are so that he knows how to gauge that buffer.
Yeah, I um. Without question, we are a buffer there, there where this property is. Um, there's um. There is, you know, originally I came in and I said, well, let me do eight on this east end of the property, and that was um. Uh, like everything else, I suggest was quickly shot down, but um, there's um. I don't know that, so the, the, the density for this, for this LDR would be 15. I cut it back to 12. Um, I, I, I would rather not cut it back anymore, but. Um, speaking of, of buffering an area. There is um. The, the continuation, if you're looking at this on the east side where 70 east is. That seems to be uh all along that, that uh line heading north and south. Um, and then, well, heading north and south there, that's more of a, it's more of a natural continuation of what has already exists. There to the south of me with uh old Ivy, but less dense. Um, so. Uh, I, I did take that into consideration already. I mean, I've tried to work that through, but um. Apparently maybe not good enough.
Well, and, and on that issue of density, I'm having a really hard time getting over. The idea that um the project of the south perhaps might be less dense than what you're talking about here. Bill, is that accounting for four single family lots that are on the other side of 70 east? Is that part of that development?
Those four lots are the Beardall subdivision, though those would not be part of it.
Okay, so if I go to Google Earth right now and I get the area that those 25 homes are in. It's everything from the south boundary of this property to 3800 north and the road between Jiffy Doo and the townhomes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Dave, I'm wondering if some of those blue squares that we're, we can see don't have lines on the north end of them. I'm wondering if those are open space. So there really are only the 18 that Bill's counting.
Yeah, there's only 18 units there.
One, Aaron, there's, it looks like there's two, and then there's maybe a lot.
Yeah, there's, there's gaps.
Yeah, there's a gap in between them. So there aren't many there as we think there are from the squares.
Well, that's, that's really easy to figure out. Um, and I'll just say this, I agree that there should not be more density. In the project that we're talking about tonight than there is on the project of the south. And that that density should be measured for the project of the south. By the space that's occupied by the townhomes and it's units divided by that space. That's how you get that density number. Um, so if this applicant needs to reduce units to, to get below that, um, I think that's appropriate. Um. And uh, I'll just leave it at that and.
So Dave, you're, you're right, and that uh, I just got another text from the project planner saying. He worked on this project and heirloom at the same time, and he got them mixed up. That lower density he gave us was on heirloom. I don't know if you remember that, but that was the. Single family detached project over by the middle school. This project, he says, is uh. 10 units per acre.
That seems more reasonable.
Okay.
More reasonable, but boy, the, those units have smaller footprints than what we're looking at tonight. Uh, there's no wasted space. It's a really efficient design. So. I, I'm still a little skeptical that it's not higher, but.
We can, I, I can certainly use the city's mapping and verify it.
Yep, me too.
I'll guess that's about right because there's more uh street circulation on that, on the Old Ivy site than there is on this. This has.
He says Old Ivy is.
And then an alley and that's it.
He says Old Ivy is 24 units on 10 acres. I mean, I'm sorry, 24 units on 2.4 acres.
Yeah.
Sorry about the confusion.
Does that include the commercial part?
No.
Does it, does it include the street as well?
It would include the street. Typically, that would be included, yeah.
Okay, so there's. That densities, if you're including the streets and all the property in front of it. Um, then that density is gonna be much greater than 10 units per acre.
You know, just what I just measured off, it looks like about 2.4 acres.
Yeah.
So. It might be right at 10.
Okay.
Another idea I had, Mr. LaFontaine.
Yeah.
Was your design process, if you were able to um change the orientation of some of those houses so that they fronted. So they fronted on 70 east and they fronted on 3900 north, and they have a design that makes them look, which is kind of like the design you have, but makes them look like a. A large home that would be suitable in the neighborhood, but just would have multiple units in it. That might be more appealing than a large apartment looking structure.
Okay.
I think that's great advice.
Kind of like, I don't know if you were, if you were watching in the first item we, we discussed where there was. Visible one, one unit from the street, but there were more tucked away behind, so it didn't really deter neighborhood feel. That might be something appealing.
Yeah, that was, that was the original um plan that I submitted. It was um. It was a long 70 east. Um, facing 70 east, but that was uh. Again, I, you know what? I thought it was great because it gave a nice face to that 70 east, but then that was rejected completely. Um, hardly without even uh any consideration at all given to it. So. I'm with you. That's what I did originally, but then I had to change, and now I've gone to this, and. I mean, I can keep going back and forth. I, I um. I, there's, there's, there's a lot of different, like I said before, there's a lot of different configurations that this can have. Um, but. I um, I seem to be at a loss. I, I'm not sure how much of the uh. I know I have to run this through the city afterwards to get everything finalized. And at this point, I, I'm not sure how many more designs I'll have to go through to do that. Um, I'm mostly just kind of. Mostly, when, so I went into this, I'm thinking, well, I just need to, to change the zoning here to make it fit. Um, everything else that's going on around me, and that's an LDR. So. That's, that's kind of where I, that's what I'm working on, and I'll do whatever I guess I need to do to make that happen, but.
Well, I'll, I'll just add, uh, Mr. LaFontaine, that even though the LDR zone would permit up to 15 units per acre.
Yeah.
That would be on the perfect site, right? Perfectly geometrically square even, very little waste.
Right.
You can hit all your parameters, and this site is not. It's, it's angled. You know, you've got a lot of uh strain, you know, your dimension front to back.
Right.
From three, is it 3900 to Old Ivy is a bit constrained. So, you know, you have to work within those constraints of your site.
Sure.
So for me, when I first saw the site plan and reviewing it, I thought, well, somebody just said, here's my footprint for a townhome. Let's see how many I can squeeze on this site, and that's, and, and still park it, you know, have a few visitor spaces. And, and meet the code. So, you know, this is a, a starting point. And I, I don't like to say that because I know you've been through this exercise already, but um, you know. The site is telling you, you can't get 12 units on here and have a, a nice marketable product. So I, you know, I would pay attention to your site constraints a little bit more and not just try to fight it so much. And, and as I said previously, you know, work with staff. They'll, they'll help guide you through the process.
Okay.
I'd like to chime in just a little bit as somebody who um has lived in kind of places that sort of look like that. I. I'm really concerned about the, the back area between the Old Ivy lot line and the supposed front of those. Um, those townhomes. It seems really constrained. It seems like a kind of dark place. Um, as a single female, I would feel uncomfortable. Going home to that. Now, going into a garage, um, and going up inside is a little bit different. But I can't see anybody really wanting to walk along that pathway in the dark.
Even if we had nice lights?
Um, some extent, if it was well lit, perhaps, but that's. The thing that I have, the discomfort that I have is feeling like that is so constrained. Um, I was mugged once, and so I'm rather sensitive to that.
Understandable. Have you learned karate since then?
No, I haven't actually.
Okay, well, I'm um. I, so part of the design that we looked at is um. Is just north of us, um Broadstone, I think, is those condos or the townhouses there. I don't know if you've walked through those or not. Um, but there. I didn't measure it, but they, they can't be any more than um, you know, door to door facing each other. They're like um. I don't even know what that is. I'm gonna say 25, maybe 30 feet. And um, and so we kind of um, part of this, and I agree with you, Laurie, and I, I uh. I, at least I partially agree. Um, the, the type of people that are, that would, that are buying these homes now, the, the younger generation, they're um. They just have a very different sense of, of almost everything in life that I'm accustomed to, but housing is one of them where. Um, and this was discussed before. It's like, well, they know it's a tighter, uh, tighter fit uh as, as. As you can see from everything that's been developed around, around me, but um, they just uh, it doesn't seem to. Not appeal to them, but considering, you know, what you were saying, I, I, I can totally understand that, so.
Mister.
Configuration just needs to be changed.
Miss White. You've mentioned several times, uh, Sir LaFontaine, that uh you were impressed with the uh. Uh. Renderings in the first thing, the first items that we looked at.
Yeah.
Um, so. Go with that. Uh, I said to you in the last meeting that um, there are many designs out there that. That can design for a twin home that makes it not look like a twin home. And you're building in a more upscale neighborhood, so find a designer that. Can design to those standards, and they don't all have to look cookie cutter. Personally, I'm not impressed with the concept design that you're showing to us. In fact, when I look at the, the side of those. My first thought was they look like barracks. Um.
Barracks?
They're, they're not appealing at all to me. Uh.
All right.
But if you had, you know, if they were different from each other, like those houses were in the first items that we discussed tonight. And you've done them yourself several times, but you were, those appealed to you. Find a designer who can drive around that neighborhood and look at the different houses, the, their styles. They're all different from each other.
Yeah.
Um. Your, your, your development does not have to be cookie cutter. And personally, I think you're trying to squeeze too much on there. If you, you scaled it back, you could have a really nice development. You could have that with amenities that would appeal to people. You say, you said in your. Um, I read the minutes from the neighborhood meeting that you want to sell these. And if you really want to attract good homeowners, there has to be some amenities there that are gonna attract them. And I don't think development is going to do that.
Okay.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions for Mr. LaFontaine at this point? Otherwise, we'll open it up to the public portion of the hearing.
Well, um, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm not ready to act on this tonight for sure, regardless of what we hear from the public. I'm strongly inclined to continue it. Um, I think the neighbors and us and uh, the people involved have been put through enough with this particular product. I haven't heard any commissioner say yet. That we're ready to act on it. Um, but at the same time. Uh, my thoughts from the last discussion that we have, we had haven't changed. This is a pretty appropriate land use for this site. Um, it with a different design, I think it works. Um, but. I'd hate to go through. Um, several different iterations of public comment when I haven't heard us say that. Um. We're ready to, to move on this necessary at this point. we're ready to, to move on as necessary at this point.
I have a question about that.
Ms. Johnson, yes.
So, since there's two different requests being made here, the first being a, a zone change and the second being a concept plan approval. Are we, are we right to wait on the zone change request until we see a concept plan approval that's worthy of it? Or are we okay to say, yeah, low-density residential is a perfect use? And when we see the right project, well, how does that work? Maybe that's for staff.
Mr. Ardmore?
So you could, you could do a number of things, right? So you could, you could recommend approval of the zone, deny the concept plan. Um, the city council would see the same concept plan uh, with the recommended zone change request. Um, that's, so to answer that question, yes, you could do that. Um, that's one of many things you could do with, with both of these items.
Is that advisable?
That's not really typically how the city has done these, that city council tends to like to see a concept plan that the planning commission and city council both feel good about before they zone the property.
Okay.
Right, and at this point, uh, they're not meeting, the applicant's not meeting the LDR requirements in full.
Correct.
With the concept plan shown. Right.
I think these need to go part and parcel. That's just my opinion. Concept plan and zone change should be reviewed simultaneously.
I would tend to agree with you.
So maybe could we just summarize a list of things for Mr. LaFontaine that he needs to address before he comes back so that we can meet the LDR requirements and the neighborhood concerns all in one fell swoop? Is that a useful thing?
Well, hopefully he's been taking notes, so.
Oh, I've been taking notes.
I'm sure Steph has as well.
But, um, I, you know, if, uh, I, I can just go through what I made on my notes, and if I left something out, maybe you could let me know. That'd be very helpful to me.
Okay. Steph, would you like to share those, uh, via email or conversation with Mr. LaFontaine after the hearing?
We'd be happy to.
Yeah, I would like to, um, chime in and say that I think the LDR zone does seem to fit this property. I'd really like to see, um, a plan that fits the neighborhood as far as, um, the aspect of the residences. And the idea of them not being cookie cutter really appeals to me.
Okay.
I think you could have, you could have four buildings that all look like a large home that's very custom-built, that have multiple garages and, and so that it looks like a single-family neighborhood that houses more people. And as long as you don't stack them in so deep that there's nowhere to park them, and there's nowhere for them to walk, and there's no landscaping to make it look believably like a single-family neighborhood, I think that it would be a really nice development. You don't have the same color, the same height, the same architecture.
Well, we could do it like we do on my Indian reservation. You got one house that's pink, one that's yellow, one that's blue.
Probably not going to fly.
Still has a sense of humor at this point, though. That's impressive.
You gotta keep your sense of humor, boy. So, okay.
So I think, I think that Steph, uh, between your own notes you've taken tonight, Mr. LaFontaine, and what Steph has taken complete notes, I'm sure, and this is recorded as well. Um, if you want to get together with them via email or a phone call or a meeting, they'll be able to share all those things with you, and that should, that should be very productive.
Okay. Agreed.
Do we need a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Mr. Anderson?
Um, I'm going to go with the simple version. Tell me if I need to do otherwise. I move that we continue item six to start with.
Okay, Mr. Anderson's made a motion to continue item six. Daniel LaFontaine requests a zone change from R110 to low-density residential for 1.9 acres for a townhome development located at 50 East 3,900 North River Bottoms neighborhood. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion as so stated?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Wyndham? Seconded by Ms. Wyndham. All those in favor of continuing item six as so stated, and I'll go through the roll call again. Ms. Wyndham?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Jensen, aye. So item six is continued. Do we want to set a continuation date for that, Mr. Pepperoni?
Um, I'm hesitating because I'm not sure we'll be able to accomplish new plans, um, by the 22nd of
Right.
Of April.
So we'll leave that open.
I think we should.
Okay. It's fine. Okay, and then item seven, which was for concept plan approval?
I can make a motion on that one.
Ms. Jensen?
I move that we continue item number seven. Daniel LaFontaine requests concept plan approval for 12 townhomes in a proposed low-density residential zone located at 50 East 3,900 North River Bottoms neighborhood.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Jensen's motion?
Ms. Urkiaga?
Second.
Thank you, seconded by Ms. Urkiaga. All those in favor of continuing item seven. Ms. Wyndham?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. We'll continue item seven as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you guys. You've had your time.
Thank you.
Right, that leaves just item eight for this evening. Item eight is a legislative item that will be, um, approved or disproved or recommended made to municipal council. Item eight, a resolution to amend the planning commission bylaws to permit electronic public hearings. This is citywide application, and Mr. Ardmore will present item eight.
Okay, so this one came on pretty late. I don't have a staff report. Um, I have this. Um, this is really just to deal with COVID-19 and any future timing commission meetings we have.
So the reason you were able to have a electronic meeting tonight before adopting this or recommending that the council adopt it is that the governor passed, uh, an executive order that allows for exactly what we're doing tonight to happen. The planning commission to hold an electronic meeting, but in that meeting, you need to adopt rules to allow them in the future. So this was drafted by Gary McGinn, and, um, we're just trying to keep the door open for further electronic meetings since none of us knows how much longer this situation we're in is going to last.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
It gets a fantastic way to go about business for the rest of our existence.
I have, I am not going to complain about it. I think it
Deborah's, Deborah's probably in her pajamas. We don't even know.
No, I'm dressed.
For once. I don't have any problems with it, but I, I'm just going to bring up, um, a concern that was mentioned in one of the letters, um, in regards to the items that we just discussed. And she was, uh, uh, she mentioned that if we had voted, um, for or against the item six and seven, that, um, there could be a, a legal ramification for the city. Um, is that ever an issue? Uh, if meetings have to continue in this way because the public isn't allowed to physically be present at these meetings?
No, we believe under the governor's executive order, and then if this, uh, language that's in front of you is approved by the city council, um, we believe that that's, um, make sure meetings legal and tight. That doesn't mean that somebody won't try to file an appeal. Um, people always have that right, but we think we're on very strong legal ground if we're, if we proceed in this direction. But, but I agree with the point that it is more difficult to take public input, and I think we need to work on perfecting that if we're going to continue with electronic meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And I would just reinforce, I think Provost City's doing what the governor and others have encouraged cities to do, which is to try to not halt as much business as possible.
Right.
While respecting the direction that we're given from medical professionals and the like. I, I really appreciate what they've done in this regard.
I feel like we got all of those letters. We read all of them. I felt like coming to the meeting, it was actually really nice to have an idea of what things we needed to address. So.
You mean before you walked in? You mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is helpful.
I, I thought it was quite helpful to read through a, I mean, it was a lot. Uh, there were a lot of emails and, and comments and letters, but, um, it was very worthwhile to have that in advance.
Agreed. Too. I loved it.
And I've been looking at the comments coming in on YouTube, and I don't feel like there's anything there that that indicates that someone feels like we're not hearing them either. And that would be something maybe staff could follow up on if we need to modify our procedure.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, especially since this was the first run-through. If there are any comments you guys, you know, each and you're in silo, feel that, uh, could have been addressed a little bit differently in the hearing, doing it electronically, please let me know, or forward it to Steph and Steph can let me know.
It's not easy to manage discussion with this format. I think you've done a great job. I mean that.
You're kind. Thank you.
No, it's, I think it's absolutely true.
It's like being on a long conference call.
Yes.
I want to know why Dave's at a golf course, though.
Hey, I do what I can.
No, the other Dave.
Yeah, David Day.
You're clearly in an office.
Is that really where he is?
That's a golf course up in Heber Valley.
Oh, nice. Oh, that's your background for Zoom. You guys know you can choose your background for Zoom.
You got to play around with.
Filters the whole nine yards, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Hey, but we're still, we're still a public meeting right now, so don't embarrass yourselves.
Well, it looks like Mr. Phillips was in the great outdoors.
Trying to be.
Yes.
And the angle of the camera, I apologize. I did not recognize you.
Now he looks like a ghost, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, it's all good. Thank you.
So do we need to, do we need to make a motion to pass this?
Oh, we do.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for item eight?
Is there a, I can't, all I can see is the, uh,
Okay, item eight.
Do you have something, Aaron, for us to read?
Okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, we forward with a positive recommendation, item number eight, a resolution to amend the planning commission bylaws to permit electronic public hearings.
Thank you. Motion, uh, to forward a positive recommendation on item eight made by Ms. Wyndham. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Phillips. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation on item eight? Ms. Wyndham?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, myself, aye. So that's unanimous. We'll forward a positive recommendation on item number eight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Urkiaga. Do we have a second?
Second.
And then by Ms. Jensen. So adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.